Good morning everyone and good morning honourable members. The meeting is called to order. Shall we rise and say a praise?
Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee to look with favour upon this parliament of the Republic of Ghana. Grant that it may perform its high duty as in thy sight. Give divine guidance to the president of the republic. Endow members of parliament and ministers of state with discernment and vision,[509.10][509.88]integrity and courage that through the labors of governments, this land and the people may be well and truly served and thy good purposes for the common human life we realized in our midst. Oh God, grant us salvation of our country, fair as it might be. A country of righteousness where none shall wrong his neighbour. A country of plenty where evil and poverty shall be done away with. A country of brotherhood where all success shall be founded on service and the honor shall be given to the deserving. A country of peace where government shall rest on the will of the people and allow for the common good. Bless the efforts of those who struggle to make this vision a living reality. Inspire and strengthen our people that they may give time, thoughts and sacrifice to speed the day of the calming beauty of Ghana and Africa. Amen.
Honourable members and audities, you are all welcome to the third session of the public accounts sitting. As I mentioned yesterday, the reports we are looking at or the reports we are going to examine is that of 2024. And the new standing order section two, standing order 2294 says that, provided it's the chairman's party that was in government at that time, the chairman will have to cede proceedings to the ranking member. So I am by this ceding proceedings for today. Because it is the 2024 audit reports that we are looking at, I'm ceding the proceedings of this meeting to our ranking member Honorable Samuel Atamills and I know he will do a good job. Honourable, over to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much Madam Chairman. I think honourable members will introduce ourselves first and starting from you Madam Nakoya.
Good morning to you all. Thank you Mr Chair. I am Nakoya Okunor, MP for the good people of Febo Tusenia East constituency, Katsoa, and a member of the committee. Thank you.
Good morning Honourable Chair. My name is Godfred Seydu Jesel. I'm MP for Waa East and I'm a member of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. My name is Cléto Seydu Dapla, MP for Jirapa, Member of the Committee.
Good morning. My name is Simon Akibanga Awurgo, MP for Nkrongbe Central and Member of the Committee.
Good morning Chairman. My name is Nano Osayaji and I'm representing the good people of Njuabeno. I'm a member of the committee.
Good morning. My name is Duke Oforiata, Member of Parliament for Fantequa South and also a member of the committee.
Good morning Chair. My name is Honorable Joe Frekinie, MP for Kwanta South and a member of the committee. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Frank Yabua, MP for Achuma Mwabeja North in the Ashanti region and a member of the committee.
Hello. Good morning. My name is Akosikuneri, the Member of Parliament for Mishaan of constituency and a member of the committee.
Good morning Chair. My name is NSTL and a Member of Parliament Kumeu and a member of this committee.
Good morning everyone. My name is Kwame Jijali Gappé, Member of Parliament for Keta and Deputy Ranking for the committee.
Good morning. My name is Samuel Atamills, MP for Commander Edina Igwafo Abrem and a ranking member of the committee.
Good morning. I am Davis Ansang Opoku, Member of Parliament for the good people of Impriso in the eastern region of the Republic of Ghana and the vice chairman of the committee. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Michael Amotin, the clerk to the committee. Thank you.
Our country is filled with good people so everybody represents the good people. You don't have to mention it. My name is Abana Osayasare, Member of Parliament for Etiwa East and the chairperson for the public accounts committee of the ninth parliament. Audit service.
Good morning. My name is Michael Ado, Assistant Auditor General, Audit Service.
Okay, may we call Ministry of Employment and Labour please? And clerk, please swear the name. Now, so you raise it.
Aye. Swear by the Almighty God.
Swear by the Almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
Nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
Good morning honourable minister. Please introduce yourself and then your delegation.
Thank you very much. My name is Abdul Rashid Hassan Pelpo, the Member of Parliament for Waa Central and Minister of Employment, Labour and Labour Jobs and Employment. I will ask the chief director to do the rest of it. Introduce yourself.
Good morning everyone. Good morning honourable. I'm Hamidu Adakurgo, Chief Director of the Ministry of Labour, Jobs and Employment. And I have at the left and Mr Dela Sabah.
Can they do self introduction please?
I'm Dela Sabah, Chief Internal Auditor of the Ministry.
I am Dowda Ibrahim Brahima, Acting Chief Labour Officer.
I am Laurence Kuncre, Head of Accounts, Labour Department.
Honourable minister, youth employment agency is under you, right?
No, Mr Chairman, it's now moved to the Ministry of Youth.
Okay clerk. It's been moved to Ministry of Youth. Okay, now the next one is, your infraction starts from paragraph... The next one is on paragraph 2057. And national pension... I think that is also under the youth employment. Do you have any on your management letter for the ministry? Do you have anything to answer for?
No, no Mr Chairman.
There's one on regional labour office. That'll be yours.
On the regional labour office, yeah.
Okay, Accra. And we have a question on uncollected revenue. And honourable Kwame, Gappé will do that. 2073.
Thank you Mr Chair. This one is about uncollected revenue amounting to 77,003,06. These infractions, the auditors recommended that the chief regional labour officer should ensure that the heads of thema and Accra metro office recover the amount of 77,003,06.4 from the companies involved and pay same into auditor general's recovery account at the Bank of Ghana. I would like to find out from the team what is the status regards to that.
The labour officer is here and would respond to that. Thank you.
Thank you Honourable Chair. The revenue has since been collected and paid into the revenue holding account of the Labour Department. We have attached evidence of the payments as per our bank statement. Auditors, can you verify?
Yes, Honourable Chair, we can confirm that the amount has been collected and banked.
So when was this collected?
Honourable Chair, I think it started from 2023, three downwards up to 2024. Except that what has happened is that because the account is managed from the head office usually until the regional office gets into contact with head office to make inquiries, they usually will not get to know that this has been paid. So when the auditors raised the issues, we had expected the regional labour officer to at least get in touch with head office to get this done. But she didn't do it. But I think the whole amount has been paid. Even more has also been recovered in terms of the 2% paid into the account.
Because we are talking about 169,000, that, I mean, it came all the way to this 77,000 and now we've been collected. I hope you have... What systems have you put in place to make sure that these amounts? We don't build it up to that level.
Honourable Chair, I think what is happening is that the various district offices that undertake these processes have been encouraged to take steps to ensure that any outstanding amount that is there is paid. But I can assure you that we are getting the cooperation of the employers. They pay it into the account because during the computation, the account in which that percentage is supposed to be paid, it's also stated in the letter of the computation. So that is even the more reason why sometimes it is paid into the account and then the officers don't get to know. So what we want to do is to at least ensure that there is that sort of information, timely information exchange between us and then the originating offices where the computations are done so that there wouldn't be this issue of whether it has been paid or it has not been paid.
All right, Honourable Jesel.
So Honourable Chair, I think I like the steps that they are putting in place to ensure that this doesn't recur. But he is still speaking in abstract terms. I would like us to prove further. Are you doing monthly reconciliations, quarterly reconciliations or what specific arrangements are you putting in place so that we don't have you coming to sit here again next year answering the same questions? Thank you.
Thank you Honourable Chair. The municipal and district offices are expected to do this to the regional offices monthly and then quarterly. But what we have noticed from this is that from the head office, we would put in place measures to ensure that we now have a unit that is in charge of planning and I have requested the lady who is heading it to develop a template for us to do it monthly, quarterly and annually so that at every point in time we will be able to tell whether there are standards in any of the districts or not so that we take steps to get it recovered. So I would like to find out from you, apart from the system you are putting in place, is there any IT system or technology being employed to facilitate this collection and deposit? The government gives me a system is in place but we are also looking at putting up some enterprise level type of mechanism to ensure the monitoring of all these things.
Honourable minister, I think that will be the only one that we have for you. Or do you have any other questions that we haven't asked you?
Honourable Chairman, I would thank you very much for this interaction. We are confident that in future it won't occur the way it has happened so we can have a smooth run and audit review. Thank you.
The chairperson would like to have her... She has a public interest question please.
Thank you very much Honourable Minister. You are the Minister for Labour and Employment. And... There's one infraction. 2057, okay, when I'm done. The issue with the Ridge Hospital. It's a staff and is accounted as labour where a nurse was... A nurse was manhandled in a way that she got injured. And as a Minister for Labour and Employment, what is it or what steps can you do to safeguard employees, especially employees in institutions like this who interact a lot with the public? What can we do to make sure that this particular incident does not happen again in the history of this country?
Thank you Mr Chairman. One of the key things we do in the ministry is to ensure that we have a stable, healthy workforce in this country and it's part of the law that is binding our functional duty to the people of Ghana. And we have the Labour Commission which has all the duties of ensuring that single issues like this are handled effectively. So I have called a meeting with them and they would look at it more comprehensively and advise on what next they will need to strengthen their own capacity to make sure the whole country is covered. The Labour Commission has requested that it will be of great importance if we can have regional offices which will look at it comprehensively throughout the country so we don't have situations where there will be a situation which is out of reach with our duty to individual workers. Thank you.
Thank you very much Honourable Minister. You and your team, you are discharged. Honourable members. Just hold on for a minute. Colleagues, the issue, honorable members.